I don't think we've really get into that here. So I would totally support the motion to move forward with item five, approval of item five.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under statutory hearings, clerk of the board. Item eight bingo license application for Saint Stevens Roman Catholic Church. Under transportation, item nine, road file number A 0745. Items 10 through 11, patent easement abandonments, road files as listed on the agenda. Madam Speaker, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items eight through 11?
Chairman, none were received for these items.
We will now consider items eight through 11.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items eight through 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under county officers, board of supervisors. Item 12, administrative correction and appointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee. Item 13, appointments to the Community Development Advisory Committee. Item 14, appointment of the State Board of Equalization. Item 15, resignation of Kenneth Sumner Sumner as constable of the County Meadows Justice Precinct. Item 16 through 20, community solutions funding as listed on the agenda.
Chairman, I do have one speaker form from Roger Pickrell. He wishes to speak in opposition on item number 12, and that is the admin correction and appointment, excuse me, to the Community Development Advisory Committee, item number 12. Roger Pickrell.
Roger.
Well, anyway, good morning. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about some question. I'd like to know about the, I see, I read here where we had two people that were being approved and one that didn't. Could you just, I mean, it says here, but can you elaborate for any reason why we had one omitted over the other two first? Is there something I can learn?
County manager.
Thank you. I will call Marcy up to the, you're to answer for the SEDAC. I believe this is under human services, correct?
Uh, I think so.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to introduce, this is Jason Matthews. He's our interim director of the Human Services Department, and he has some background information about this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for this, for the SEDAC appointment process, we are looking at those individuals that are both qualified and also interested in serving in this capacity. In this instance, we did make that correction because there was an issue for the person that was previously nominated and just wasn't able to serve, and so we made that replacement in order to fulfill that requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the board will now consider items 12 through 20.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 12 through 20 with a comment regarding items 16 through 20.
Mr. Chairman, I will second it also, which is just a quick thank you to Constable Ken Sumner retiring after, I think he was the original constable when they first created that justice court out there in the West Valley. Think it's shared by both Clint and I, but just a great individual, and I wish him the best of well as he moves on to enjoy life. So thank you, Ken Sumner, for your service as constable of the County Meadows.
Thank you. Supervisor, vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm commenting on projects that were approved today regarding improvements to the community in my district, District Two. Over the past several years, the East Valley has undergone a significant period of growth and development that's not slowing down anytime soon. To aid in this continued expansion, we are investing in projects that enable residents and their families to learn about our natural world, enjoy outdoor spaces, pursue an education, bolster their careers, and lead healthy and fulfilling lives. This project today of community solutions funding for District Two is going to the following: purchasing heat relief supplies for senior citizens and disabled individuals; early education training curriculum and supplemental resources and aids for students enrolled in the Early Childhood Education Program with EVA; provide hands-on experiences to teach Maricopa County residents and the importance of dark skies for folks in Fountain Hills; for the well-being of humans, plants, and animals at the exciting new Dark Sky Discovery Center; purchasing trail signage for Hoz Trail System, which will provide Maricopa County residents with trail details, including trail difficulty levels; and finally, purchasing leashes and shoes for dogs to be handed out at Maricopa County Heat Relief Centers. I'm grateful for my colleagues in joining me in approving this, and grateful for everyone on staff for helping putting this together, most especially, I'm grateful for all of you residents in District Two who have spoken to me about the urgent needs in our community. I'm glad to do what I can to help. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second on items 12 through 20. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under county attorney, items 21 and 22, IGAs with the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family. Under recorder, item 23, MOU for Next Generation 911. Under school superintendent, item 24, apply and accept grant for consortium school districts. Item 25, budget adjustment for the Educational Supplemental Program Fund. Item 26, IGAs with school districts for election services.
Chairman, I do have some speaker forms. I have two speaker forms to speak on item number 21 and one speaker form to speak on item number 24. I will call first on Tom Arnold. He wishes to speak on item number 21, IGA with Governor's Office.
I just, I would either like to have a question answered or clarification. On that one, it said that it was, oh, the agreement commences on May 1st, 2024. Where, two and a half months after that? Is the money already being spent before you folks agreed on, or was this something that was voted on back in May, approved, and is it up for reconsideration for whatever reason?
County manager.
Chairman, Catherine from the County Attorney's Office is here, and she can come up and answer those questions.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This grant agreement had the original term of May 1st through April 30th, 2025, May 1st of 24th through April 30th, 2025. The documentation with the grantor was just recently finalized, which is why it's just now coming before you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker on item number 21, Leslie.
So I'm going to follow up with that. That didn't answer the question, was it being spent already? We heard an answer, but we didn't hear this many months later, is it already being spent?
Chairman, it is not already being spent.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I want to bring to your attention, I literally was refused to be able to turn in my speaker slip. I turned in a stack of them, and then I walked back to get mine. They refused to turn it in. They have refused to also allow Roger to change out his agenda items. And again, let's, let's be for real here, you guys know that this is something made up.
Chairman, that has nothing to do with the item.
Well, I'm allowed to speak on it, being that this is the only, excuse me, could you allow the chairman? Mr. Chairman, could we have this conversation without interruptions from the handlers?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'd like to ask you is, I noticed in 21, I noticed in several of them, it talks about intergovernmental, the intergovernmental. What qualifies, it's item number 21, 22, 26, 29, 30, 31, 32, 45, and 50, I stopped keeping track after that. What makes these intergovernmental things, what qualifies something to be intergovernmental?
Simply when it's an agreement between one government and another.
Okay, which governments are we talking about here?
That's in the, if you read the agenda, you would know.
I did, and matter of fact, I read the links, and it didn't clarify, so that's why I'm asking. I'm trying to figure out which, which intergovernmental agencies are you talking about?
Please.
Chairman, each agenda item with an IGA would be different depending on which government agency would we be entering into the agreement with. So it could be a city, it could be a state, it depends on the item.
I did go look things up through Google, and it didn't specify, so I'm asking you to figure out how we can specify which intergovernmental agency it is.
So Chairman, Vice Chair, for example, this one is intergovernmental agreement between the state of Arizona and the Maricopa County Attorney's Office.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chairman. I really appreciate the fact that you answered the question.
Next speaker is Roger Pickrell, and he wishes to speak on item number 24.
Thank you again. I'll be brief. I looked through a lot of the rhetoric here, talking about grant monies for educational cantorium. I need to find out if there's any way in some of this grants that we could actually start working towards school choice, like maybe helping home school families to, you know, to subsidize some of their income, that they're not having to take out of their pockets, that might be, you know, they're, these, these families are raising substantial citizens that will be able to maybe be in office one day. We need to be able to help get our education back in line with all choice. Can we, is there anybody that might have a hopeful upcoming thought on that?
Mr. Chairman, that, that would take legislative change. I mean, we don't fund schools at all, but to, I mean, that's a legislative responsibility, and they have a very robust system now in terms of, of school choice, but that would, that would be a legislative responsibility. We're not, we don't fund public or charter schools or private parochial schools.
Yeah, I just, I thought maybe there could be a shoehorn opportunity of wisdom on that, you know what I'm saying? You know, to be able to, you know, granted, we do have the idea that there's legislating that could be dealt with, but then connecting tissue might need to know, you know what I'm saying? And that's why I brought to you to ask that question. So if anybody has a wonderment, like an Arsenio Hall moment, you know I'm talking about. Thank you for understanding that one. But I'd appreciate if anybody could work on that for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, no more speakers. The board will now consider items 21 through 26.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval, items 21 through 26.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under sheriff, item 27 through 30, MOUs and agreements with Agila Elementary School District, Paloma Elementary School District, Town of Guadalupe, City of Goodyear. Item 31, delegation of authority for SCAAP funds. Items 32 through 33, agreements with, amend agreements with Independent Investigative Services and Town of Cave Creek. The board will now consider items 27 through 33.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items 27 through 33.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Continued under sheriff, item 34, transfer of ownership of retiring K-9 Rico, and this item requires a unanimous vote. The board will now consider item 34.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item number 34.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman.
Aye.
Supervisor Galvin.
Aye.
Supervisor Gates.
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Aye.
Chairman Sellers.
Aye. That motion carries. Under treasurer, item 35, budget transfer, items 36 through 43, offer on tax-deeded land parcels as listed on the agenda.
Chairman, I do have one speaker form, Leslie Shepherd wishes to speak on item number 36, and that is an offer on tax-deeded land parcel, 14163886, item number 36.
Hello. Okay, so, Mr. Chair, it stands out that we have over nine departments that are, well, what I see here is, there's number 36, number 37, number 38, number 39, number, what I'll say is, number 36 is for $300 this parcel, whatever it is. Number 37 has $300 for a parcel, number 38 has $300 for a parcel, number 39, $300 for a parcel, 40, $300 for a parcel, 41, $300 for a parcel, 42, $300 for a parcel, 43, $300 for a parcel, 44 has $200 parcel, a $200 parcel, a $1,200 parcel. So these were actually two individuals. I guess what I'm trying to ask you is, I know that this came up before, I know that Blue mentioned that he wanted to put a bid out on one of them previously, and I remember Ray Michaels spoke about it as well. So I see this again, and then in between that time, we had an actual person, one of, you know, we, the people that came here, to address you guys, because you guys had parceled out his property and limited down what he had to sell. So I'm just trying to understand, what qualifies, I think this is probably a question for Jen Porkowski, so what qualifies these, that you guys decide these are, because you're the one that answered on it last time, you said it was a little sliver of this, but then when I see a man come in here and talk about you guys actually reducing his property and affecting his ability to get his money back out of his property, I'm trying to understand, can we be positive that you're actually not taking this from somebody's property?
County manager.
Chairman, thank you. Jordan is also here from the Treasurer's Office, who initiates the process, but for example, these parcels are roads. They become remnant parcels that weren't combined with another parcel, because all of these parcels going to the Department of Transportation are roads, and then they...
But number 44 are to people, actually listed to people.
And then they, for example, the parcels that are going to McDott are roads, which then someone didn't pay the tax on, it becomes foreclosed upon, and McDott is picking them up and putting them into the system. But Jordan and Alex can talk a little bit more about the process, including for the people.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, all of these are state-deeded parcels, so they had delinquent taxes, and they were foreclosed to the state under the care of the County Board of Supervisors. All of these parcels are available and listed on the Clerk of the Board's website, and if anyone is interested in placing an offer, they're able to go through the inventory and submit an offer using the offer form on the website. All of the items on the agenda today have already gone through that process, and just in the interest of facilitating the process, after offers have been submitted, we do not allow subsequent offers.
What website is that, please?
Thank you, your time's up.
What website is that, please?
Oh.
You can't give me the website? You said a website, could you give me specifically the website?
He wanted to answer. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, members of the board, you can get it on the Clerk of the Board's website, there is a link for tax-deeded parcels.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Board will now consider items 30.
Mr. Chairman, I think real estate wants to, to talk about it, because we're talking, I think we're talking about, in the surveying process, maybe, maybe a chunk of a cross street right in the middle is, it didn't get surveyed right. So why don't you speak with that? That's why it'd be very difficult to sell a piece of a middle of a road to a citizen. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. With respect to the offers from the county for the Department of Transportation, there is a specific state statute that allows the county to make an offer on these tax-deeded parcels without going to auction. So we're simply following the state statute. All of the parcels for the Department of Transportation are either on a road that the county maintains that we need the right of way for, they're adjacent to existing right-of-way that will eventually be built out, so we're getting them ahead of time, and that's why we're getting those parcels.
Okay, thank you. All right, now the board will consider items 35 through 43.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items number 35 through 43.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under treasurer, continued, item 44, offer on tax-deeded land parcel. The board will now consider item 44.
Mr. Chair, this particular item is in District Three, and I move for the acceptance by the Board of Offer Four in the amount of $1,000 by Stephen Paulson. Mr. Paulson, he actually owns a parcel of land adjacent to the parcel at issue, so accepting a bid by the contiguous landowner keeps with the spirit of the Empowering Statute, which is ARS 42-28303, so I move for acceptance of offer number four as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under judicial branch, justice courts, item 45, IGA with Town of Fountain Hills. The board will now consider item 45.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item number 45.
We have a motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under county offices and departments, air quality, items 46 and 47, agreements with U.S. Department of Homeland Security and U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Under correctional health, item 48, amend agreement with Human Services Campus. Under elections, item 49, precinct committeemen.
Chairman, I do have a few speaker forms for items, or to speak on items 46, 47, and 49. I will first call on Diane Barker, and she wishes to speak on items 46 and 47.
Good morning, Chairman Sellers and Board of Supervisors. I'm Diane Barker, and I'm in District Five. I come here today as an advocate for multimodal transportation and choice, and people have their favorite way of moving around, but I like to, you know, open the door to see people that might choose some other way than our single occupancy vehicle. So I say that in the air quality, you're getting two grants, one's BioWatch 46, and the other one is 47. The first one is, I have a little experience about, there was a triage that I participated in with a biohazard in LA, but they sent the people that were harmed here, and so they had to send them out to the different hospitals, and we went through that. And so I'm very in support of this program, it's a little under $1 million, but I'd like to have the county let me know that it's going to end after these 20 years in 2025, if you're going to continue this. And in the light of the fact of the big Secret Service debacle, is we need to have coordination between our governments, and I want to see that in Maricopa County. Then the other one has to do with particulates, and this is like the size of a less of a hair, and it's very harmful to elderly, I hate that word, older citizens and our youth. And so the thing is, is that I would like to see that you do accept both of these, and we have high pollution alerts for ozone, and it's bad for particulates. People have the directive to choose ride share.
Thank you, Diane.
Next up is Jody Brackett, also wishes to speak on items 46 and 47, followed by Barbara Ratty on item 49.
Well, you're about to approve an agreement between the United States Department of Homeland Security and Maricopa County through the Air Quality Department, in the not-to-exceed amount of $820,779. This agreement is funded by a grant from the DHS with the purpose of continuing funding for the BioWatch program. For the fiscal year 2025, air quality composite indirect rate of 36.10% will be applied to the direct charges of $618,985. The recoverable indirect cost of administering this grant is $201,794. The non-recoverable, recoverable indirect cost is zero amount. The award includes capital equipment expenses of $60,000, which are excluded from the indirect cost recovery. The BioWatch program provides air monitoring and analysis, notification procedures, and risk assessment to more than 30 jurisdictions. This program can substantially minimize the catastrophic impact of a biological attack. BioWatch is managed by the DHS Countering Weapons of Mass Destruction Office. The agreement is effective from June 1st, 2006 until May 31st, 2025, while the budget program period is effective from June 1st, 2024 until May 31st, 2025. Mr. Chair, based on this agenda item, it appears air quality is, control is a concern. Who on the panel is qualified to respond with an educated answer? Who can I speak to regarding air quality concerns, and what steps are we taking currently?
County manager.
Chairman, that sounds like a broader question about air quality. We have air quality staff here that can follow up with her after the meeting and answer her questions.
And who, who is that?
Can raise his hand? Thank you, his name's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker Barbara Ratty, item number 49.
And Barbara Ratty, Mr. Chair, in the precinct committeeman process, how are the people who are party non-defined provided equal rights to become precinct committeemen? And it's going to take you a few minutes to get that answer for me, I'd like you to stop my time.
What was the question?
What was the question?
Okay. In the precinct committeeman process, how are the people who are party non-defined provided equal rights to become a precinct committeeman?
No.
Because precinct committeemen, they don't have a party not defined.
Right.
If you don't have a party defined, you can't be a precinct committeeman.
Right.
So we'd like to see that.
Mr. Liddy.
Okay.
As a member of the Constitution of the United States, the right to free association is a right upon which government cannot infringe, and political parties are association, and so...
Thank you.
And so if registered members of one party want to participate in the group, become a precinct committeeman, they may do so. And under the statutes in Arizona, the county plays a role in determining if there's a vacancy. And that's true with any freely, free association, such as the Democrats, the Republicans, the Greens, the Libertarians. And party not determined are exactly that, individuals who choose to register to vote and exercise their constitutional right to the franchise, but choose not to freely associate with any of those groups. And so precinct committeemen are members of and freely associated of those individual parties.
And, Mr. Chairman, just...
According to the Constitution.
And just, and just to piggyback, I guess, just kind of underlines the frustration I've always had with, with this particular item being on our agenda. I really believe it's a, it's a, it's a party function, and, and they should be able to select, you know, whatever, why, why is it coming here? But that would be a legislative, again, a legislative's change, something the legislature put in statute, how, how they operate, that it has to come to the board for final approval, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for Ms. Ratty. Ms. Ratty, have you brought this question to your state legislators?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay, maybe you should. It's a very good question.
Okay, because I was going to ask, I was going to ask, how do I get the answers, and whose number and name can you give me today?
Your lawmaker, whoever your representative or senator is. And I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, this, it's not even just this, it's presidential primary elections, where independents don't even get to participate. Talk about taxation without representation. That was one of the first bills I would introduce to the legislature, to allow independents, if you're going to allow them to vote, allow them to vote in Republican primary, allow them to vote in Democratic primary, don't exclude them. So anyways, that's a whole nother, I can grandstand on this whole item.
But I will, I will say, there are reasons, there are reasons why political parties want members of their political party to be the ones to participate, which is something I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further speakers?
No other speakers.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items 46, 47, 48, and 49.
We have a motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that motion carries. Under emergency management, items 50 through 53, IGA and MOUs with City of Tempe, Arizona Equine Rescue Organization. Arizona Equine Rescue Organization, Salvation Army, and Hands-on Greater Phoenix. Under enterprise technology, item 54, expenditure authority and extend contract with Databank. Item 55, competition impracticable contract with Pragma, Pragma, Pragmatica LLC. I got it.
Parkway Hall.
Under facilities management, 56 through 57, competition impracticable to FCI Construction and O'Neil Mechanical Services, Inc.
Chairman, I do have one speaker form. Barbara Ratty wishes to speak in opposition on item number 54.
Hi again. You answered my other question very well, so I hope I can get that on this answer. This is regarding expenditure authority and extend contract for, for competition impractical contract with Databank. That's what it says. Mr. Chairman, a $1 million fund on database document management system. Looking at the links provided and looking online for more details, I'm forced to ask you, what do you mean by maintenance fee, $1 million? I'm trying to understand how my doc, my tax dollar is being used at an absorbent fee.
County manager.
Chairman, our chief information officer, Rich McCady, is on the line, and he can provide specific details, but on basis how we store all of our documents, which being stored electronically allows us to more quickly fulfill public records requests. So, Rich, if you are able to connect to him, he can provide some specifics on the maintenance fee.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. This item is actually for expenditure authority, not necessarily expenditures. But as the county manager has indicated, this includes a number of things, including software maintenance and support, as well as professional services for the development of new document management capabilities that improve efficiencies for departments. As noted here, this is really a bridge to finalizing the RFP for the selection of a new document, potentially new document management service provider. So again, it is just authority, but it does allow us to continue to develop new projects and capabilities during this time.
So is it giving you the authority to do so? Or is it giving you the best, you the authority to spend $1 million on it?
Chairman, the, it gives you the authority to spend up to $1 million.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just on that note, you know, as a board and as a function, there's so many different things that we've introduced technology into the system over a decade of time that I've been here. But quite often, even in the business world, when you go to systems that are of a proprietary nature, you look at that also, because you have expenses coming down the road, especially when it comes to proprietary software and the systems that run it. So this, I think this just gives us the chance and the ability to continue, you know, working through the years with this system. But it also gives us a chance of working with these systems to see what else is out there at some point, and that's what looks like is coming up, and RFP at some point, that we're going to be able to, again, stare into these systems and see what's the best out there, and hopefully what's the cheapest, but when it comes to software, you know, it just, it just never turns out that way. But thank you for the question.
Could I add to that then? So-
No, I, I just-
I mean, is there a calculation? Is there a formula for the calculation to get to $1 million?
If you'd like to speak directly with our IT department, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Could I get that name, please?
The board will now consider items 50 through 57.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items 50 through 57.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
That motion carries. Under finance, item 58 through 60, contract MOU and IGA with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, the Maricopa County Human Services Department, the City of Phoenix. Under item 61, funds transfers warrants under human services. Item 62, 63, personnel agenda for Maricopa County and Judicial Branch. Item 64, election security support premium pay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that we were briefed, you know, before. Item 59 is, is now off the agenda.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Just wanting to remind.
Move approval of items 58 through 65, setting out number 59 with a comment, if I may, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number 64 is election security support premium pay. This item provides $1.50 an hour premium pay rate for our sheriff's office employees who are supporting election security. We're extremely, it's a very small amount, quite frankly, but we are so grateful to our law enforcement, particularly sheriff's security services and law enforcement across Maricopa County for all they're doing to keep everyone safe during these difficult times. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The board will now consider items 58 through 65. Or we already-
Was made.
Yeah.
I have a, a motion by Supervisor Gates, but not a second.
Second. I thought I seconded it, but I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under human services, item 66, agreement with Maricopa County Community College District. Item 67 through 71, amend agreement and IGAs with Industrial Development Authority of Maricopa County, City of Surprise, Community Bridges, Inc., and City of Tempe. Under medical examiner, item 72, amend independent contractor agreement. Under procurement services, items 73 and 74, contracts for automated central payment system and jail management system software. The board will now consider items 66 through 74.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items 66 through 74.
We have a motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under public health, item 75, accept grant funds from the Department of Health and Human Services Centers. Item 76 through 83, amend contracts, lease agreements, and IGAs as listed on the agenda.
Chairman, I do have two speaker forms. Both are from Lori Barone. She wishes to speak on item number 76. It's to amend the contract with Chicanos Por La Casa. And on item number 81, to amend the IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services.
All right. Well, on number 76, it's, says to approve the contract amendment between Maricopa County by and through the Department of Public Health and Chicanos Por La Casa and West Valley OB-GYN. This amendment shall update the term expiration to June 30th of '26, budget for both contracts. These contracts are used for syphilis testing. The West Valley OB-GYN budget shall be updated to include an additional $210,956 for services starting July of '25 through June 30 of '26, making the new not to exceed $645,000. Says Chicanos Por La Casa's budget shall be updated to include an additional $267,519 for services starting July 21st, or 1st, '25 through June 30, '26, making the new not to exceed $945,602.18. That's a lot of money. Is syphilis really the only thing that that's going to get used on? And is that that big of a problem in the West Valley? Because that's almost $1 million for syphilis testing. How can we prevent, make sure that our taxpayer dollars are not funding abortion at the OB-GYN clinics?
County manager.
Chairman, I would also like to call Marcy Flanagan up to provide more information on this item, but I believe we are number one in the nation in congenital syphilis. But I'll let Marcy speak to that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board again. This is exactly what it states for, congenital syphilis testing. This is very preventable from when a woman is pregnant, specifically prior to her delivering. If we are able to detect syphilis and treat it, the chances of survival for the baby are great. If the child is not, if the child is born before we are able to detect syphilis, that's called congenital syphilis in a newborn, their mortality rate is extremely high. And as the county manager pointed out, we have one of the highest rates of congenital syphilis in the nation, and this is funding only for these services. It is not used for abortion. It is not used for family planning services. 100% of these funds are used for congenital syphilis testing and treatment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So is this a program by Maricopa County to address maternity health and the health of babies?
Correct. It's the health of the mothers and the babies prior to being born.
Thank you very much.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just clarification, this is a county, countywide service, right? It isn't just designated for West Valley.
Yes. Supervisor Gallardo, you are correct. Even though it's at these specific locations, they treat patients from all over Maricopa County. They don't have to live in the West Valley. We just partner with these agencies to provide this service.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, Ms. Barone also has a speaker form to speak on item 81, amend IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services.
So this one's to approve amendment six by and through the Department of Public Health and the Arizona Department of Health for High-Risk Pregnancy Program, Community Health Nursing Services. The above-named contracts are hereby amended and specified below. Pursuant to the special terms and conditions, provision three, contract extension, the contract is hereby extended through August 31, '24. Pursuant to the uniform terms and conditions, amendments, the special terms and conditions are reserved and replaced. Well, I've, I've looked up this information. I didn't see anything where it describes the special terms. That should be included in the descriptions. What are the special terms? And it's for high-risk pregnancies, but again, there's nothing here that says that there's any money going to go to helping, our money go to, so, 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 a little, no funds being set aside for high-risk pregnancies. So, but you're giving $654,000 was given to the OB-GYN for possible abortions on the West Side and money to support, but where's the money to support high, high-risk pregnancies? Even though, you know, you're going to give some of it to, for syphilis, which yes, does address high-risk pregnancies, but how can we make sure that that money is not supporting abortion? And what are special terms that's used very often in this, in this agenda item? I want to know what the special terms are, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first, I'd like to clarify that item number 81, we are accepting funds from the Arizona Department of Health Services. We aren't providing funds to anyone. They are providing funds to us to support high-risk pregnancies. Again, I'll just clarify, none of our funds in Maricopa County government, Department of Public Health are spent for abortion services, ever. These are for us to support, educate, and help mothers that are high-risk pregnancies. That could include syphilis testing, but that's a very separate program. And so this is us accepting funds to help high-risk pregnancy mothers. The other agenda item was us providing funds to agencies to provide syphilis testing.
Thank you.
That still doesn't answer my question about special terms.
The special terms and conditions are all in the link and on the clerk of the board's website. Special terms and conditions are part of every contract that outlines what we're going to be providing, what services. And so there is, that's truly part of every contract. There's special terms and conditions, and you can see those on the link in the clerk of the board. Again, none of them are used for abortion services.
Thank you, Marcy. The board will now consider items 75 through 83.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 75 through 83 and make special note of appreciation, thanks to staff for working to help maternity health, babies' health, and address high-risk pregnancies. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Under public health continued, amend IGA with Arizona Board of Regents. Supervisor Gates will recuse on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The board will now consider item 84.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve number, item number 84.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Did you enjoy your break? Under public health continued, item 85, agreement with the Centers for Disease Control. Under transportation, item 86, IGA with Arizona Department of Transportation. 87, traffic control regulation changes. 88 through 91, road abandonment, road files as listed on the agenda. Item 92, easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. The board will now consider items 85 through 92.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item numbers 85 through 92.
We have a motion.
Second. Oh, sorry. Second with a comment on item number 86.
And a second. Supervisor Hickman.
I just want to thank everyone for working together. Item number 86 is about traffic signal and the process on which we can get traffic in and out of, of Cardinal Stadium or State Farm Stadium. It's, that's been almost since the Cardinals played there. If you've ever been to a game day, it's, it's, it's difficult, to say the least. So I appreciate everybody working together to, to start installing some traffic support systems so we can get people in and out. We've had two Super Bowls out there, and it's just a glut of people that cannot get around. So I appreciate, this is, this is good government. And this is why some days, when you're just flowing along finally, this is because of programs like this. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Under consent agenda, items 99 through 107, duplicate stale-dated warrants, secured unsecured tax rule corrections, property reclassification appeal for approval, donations, clearing uncollectible tax, Head Start report for April 2024.
Excuse me, Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you skipped items 93 through 98.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. We'll back up to setting of hearings. Clerk of the Board. Must have two pages stick together. 93, under clerk of the board 93, petitions to form Woodland Terrace Irrigation Water Delivery District. Item 94 and 95, impact statement for the proposed Wrigley-Terrance Tangerine Park Irrigation Water Delivery District and the Beverly Park Irrigation Water Delivery District. Under planning and development, item 96, planning and zoning, setting of hearings. Under transportation, item 97 through 98, patent easement abandonments as listed on the agenda. The board will now consider items 93 through 98.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items number 93 through 98.
We have a motion.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, now moving to consent agenda, items 99 through 107, duplicate stale-dated warrants, secured unsecured tax rule corrections, property reclassification appeal for approval, donations, clearing uncollectible tax, Head Start report for April 2024, tax abatement, and delinquent property tax interest waiver. The board will now consider items 99 through 107.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, number 99 through 107.
We have a motion.
A second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Consent agenda continued, settlement resolution of property tax cases and claims. Supervisor Gates will recuse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The board will now consider item 108.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, item number 108.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under Board of Supervisors' Addendum, County Attorney, item 109, Quarterly RICO Expenditure Application, item 110, RICO One-Time Expenditure Application, item 111, Settlement in Maricopa County versus Purdue Pharma et al. Under Elections, item 112, Amend Voting Location Temporary Use Agreement with LDS Churches. Under Finance, item 113, Expenditure Authority for Interest Revenues. The board will now consider items 109 through 113.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second with a comment, if I may.
We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to note, item 111, which is another settlement between Maricopa County and one of the entities that has been responsible for distributing opioids in our community. I see Tom Liddy's here from the county attorney's office. I want to thank Tom personally, who's been involved in this throughout, from going back two county attorneys ago. Thank you for your work and the entire team. This is going to make a difference, this is going to save lives and make a difference in the lives of a lot of people here in Maricopa County who've had to deal with this scourge of, of opioids. So thank you, Tom.
And, Mr. Chairman, a comment on item number 112? And I would like to salute Ms. Candace Koppel that gave a great, a great prayer and pledge today. Candace, thank you. Your work was even mentioned in a news story about working together with the LDS churches to become pole sites. And I want to thank you for that personally. It's been so helpful, and maybe other churches will, will stand with the LDS churches and become pole sites as well. And so thank you for your hard work. This is just to grow out of that. And I cannot believe that, I never saw you give a prayer when you're Denny Barney's Chief of Staff up here. He should have, he should have grabbed you and had that happen in front of me. So thank you, Candace, for all your hard work in this space.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Flood Control District, items 114 and 115, amend IGAs with City of Glendale and the town of Fountain Hills. Item 116, Agreement for Cave Buttes Dam Safety Improvements. Item 117, IGA with City of Phoenix. Items 118 and 119, Declare/Sell Excess Parcels as listed on the agenda. Item 120, Execute Deed of Full Release and Recovenants. Item 121, Reconvenance, pardon me. Item 121, Personnel Agenda. Item 122, Easement Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. The board will now consider items 114 through 122.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items number 114 through 122.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors. Under Library District, item 123, Personnel Agenda. Item 124, Monthly Donation Report. The board will now consider items 123 and 124.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items number 123 and 124.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors. Under Stadium District, 125, item 125, Annual Audit. The board will consider item 125.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Stadium District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Item 126, Public Comment.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a special request that we just quickly move up item number 127 for a moment before 126?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Supervisor, summary of current events.
Was curious, Mr. Hickman, if you wanted to say something?
So, yeah.
And I want to follow up.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I know that Steve took a meeting yesterday about the Joe Foss shooting range, and I know that there's some people here that, that would like to talk about it. And I definitely want to hear what people have traveled all the way out here to, to say, if they would so desire, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you would maybe bring up the public comments of that particular item. I hope that they can, they can hear clearly. I'd like to, is Ivy, I didn't get a chance to meet Ivy. Is Ivy here? I was just wondering if you could bring her up first during the public comment period and discuss, and discuss the issue first and, and let, so everybody can know that, that she's been in touch with the supervisor whose, whose district, the Joe Foss shooting range is in. Ivy and her husband and child live in my district. Oh, okay, two children live in my district. So I think, I think I'd like to have her go first, and then if, if people want to talk about this topic, because things are moving. I, I, things are moving, I believe, in a great direction. Again, it's not my district, but, but it sounds like things are moving in a greater direction that we just need a little bit of time for. So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, nothing else on Supervisor comments.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, quickly, I just want to express my appreciation for all the things, all the folks who've come down here, and for you folks who've come down here regarding the Joe Foss shooting range, I really appreciate all the feedback and information that we have received. This is how the public process works and should work, is that we incorporate the feedback we hear from our citizens. And we heard from Mr. Hickman that this is located in a different district, but all of us look at it as a county holistic issue as well, but we're working with our colleague who represents this district. But I'm really looking forward to hearing the comments and the feedback and the ideas that people have here today, because we're going to use that to, I think, what will be a successful resolution, and I really want it to be a triple bottom line, win, win, win for all involved. So thank you for coming down. I look forward to hearing from you, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other supervisors have comments? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Chairman, Supervisors, just really quick, for the record, we received several email comments on various subjects, and all of those comments have been shared with all of the board offices. We do have several public comment requests, approximately 34 speaker forms. These that I have clipped together are all on Joe Foss, and the rest are regular comments.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think everyone wants to get out of here as soon as possible. One thing I do advise is, is don't be repetitive. If, if someone has already made the point that you were going to make, we've heard them loud and clear, and we understand what the issue here is at stake. So consider yourself heard by being here, but if you want to pass up your time because someone already made your point, then let that be known, and we appreciate it. But once again, we thank you for coming down.
You might want to explain, some of them are new, about the two-minute, the two-minute rule.
Yeah, we do, we do limit comments from each speaker to two minutes, and the microphone will be shut off at, at the end of two minutes, and we're not allowed to reply to or discuss any of the items. Staff may follow up with someone later on, but anything that's not on the published agenda, we cannot discuss from the, from the dais. Okay.
We understand that you guys are allowed to respond to criticism. Is that correct?
Yeah. I'm glad to speak. I'm glad to speak. Any public comments?
Yep. Okay. Well, it looks like my time is going, so I'll, I'll start talking. My name's Ivy. I'm here to urge you guys to stop the transfer of Joe Foss Shooting Complex to Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, and I'm here to urge you to do it urgently. I, I know that you say things are moving, but they're not moving fast enough, because this Saturday, I won't be allowed to go to the range. Mr. Hickman, I thank you for taking my phone call. Mr. Gallardo, thank you so much for meeting with me yesterday. I'm still calling on you to fix this, and I need you to publicly say that you're going to fix it, or else it doesn't mean anything. My family lives on county land. If we dial 911, MCSO shows up, so thank you, gentlemen. However, their response time on average is 53 minutes, and I live pretty burly. No amount of extra training space can fix this. The only thing that can fix it is hiring, and I'm sure all of you guys know that that's a big struggle right now. So what I can do to fix this is train frequently with my firearms so that I can respond to a threat before law enforcement can respond to my phone call. Joe Foss Shooting Complex being closed is preventing me from doing this. Before July 1st of this year, Goodyear and Buckeye PD were using the range regularly to train. Right now, both of those agencies are sharing an eight-lane, 25-yard indoor shooting range. If any of you guys shoot frequently, you know that that is not what police agencies need. That, that's not enough for them. Goodyear PD has stated that this range can only handle about 50, 50% of their needs. This is a readiness issue. So right now, what I want to ask you guys is, what is our next step in pushing this forward? How can we fix this? How can you fix this for us? Most people here, their votes for you depend on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dan Bauer, and then Tony Easton.
Good morning, Chairman Sellers, members of the board. My name is Dan Bauer, and I'm the president of the Buckeye Sportsman's Club, and I'm here today to ask that the Joe Foss Shooting Complex not be taken from the public and given to the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. Since 1971, there has been a public shooting facility in Buckeye Hills Recreation Park, or Regional Park. While this was a somewhat primitive range, it provided a safe, controlled environment for families to enjoy firearms. Organizations like mine have taught gun safety to thousands of children and adults utilizing this facility. I know this, not only because I am a teacher, but my father brought me there in 1979 for my gun safety class. Since the Joe Foss facility was built, it has become a jewel in not only Buckeye, but the entire West Valley, with people driving hours to find a friendly, clean, and most importantly, safe place to shoot. Without Joe Foss, people will be forced into the raw desert to find a place to shoot, and with the explosive growth that the West Valley is experiencing, this is becoming more and more of a challenge, as evidenced by the death of a young woman in the desert north of Buckeye several years ago. We are asking that you please reopen and keep Joe Foss fully open, so the public will have a safe place to shoot. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Easton, and then Carol Munoz.
Hi, my name's Tony Easton. I'm here to talk about the recent closing to the public of the range as well. I've been a volunteer there for four years, chief range safety officer. I also had a management position there when it was closed. Our volunteers, it's all volunteer staff, and a lot of them have military backgrounds. We have retired police officers, we have retired sheriffs, we have a very skilled staff there. We all have one common goal, and like Dan talked about, it's, it's a safety for the public, to have a good, safe place to shoot. We all wear these vests out there, and it's, so we're visible to the public when they're out there shooting, to keep them safe, to help train them sometimes. We have shooters that, they may have a jam or a misfire, they don't know what to do. We're able to help them with them. We have new shooters that come out with a brand-new firearm and a bag of ammunition, and they don't know how to operate it. We provide a safe environment to show them how to use those firearms. A lot of these people, especially the new ones, when they come out, they're very happy when they leave. They're all smiles, fist bumps, high fives, and it's fun. One of the things I like to say to them when they leave is, who knew putting holes in paper could be so much fun? So what I'd like to say to you is the same thing, is these people are now going to go out to the desert to shoot. It's going to provide an unsafe environment, it's going to present environmental hazards, too. There's lead, there's going to be a lot of trash in the desert, unfortunately. The last thing I'd like to say is, when these people go out in the desert to shoot, with it being unsafe and all, they're not going to find these people in these vests out there to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Munoz, and then Jay Wagner.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name's Carol Munoz. I've been a volunteer, volunteer at Joe Foss Shooting Complex for over four years. Unfortunately, it was closed to end of June. I would like to discuss a couple of issues. Three, two distinctive problems that I foresee with the closure of Joe Foss Shooting Complex: dangerous shooting practices and trash. Shooting out in the desert, as Dan and Tony have said, and the lack of safety protocols will create unsafe conditions. Do the shooters know how to use their firearm properly? And a lot of times, they don't. What direction are they shooting? And what will the bullet impact? My example would be on Sunday, January 14th, 2018, on Tonopah-Salome Highway, and this is a dirt road just south of I-10 and Miller Road. Cammie Gilstrap was hit by a stray bullet in the chest and died. She was 24 years of age and pregnant. As far as we know, she's, the shooter has never been identified. It took her death for this part of the desert to be closed off permanently. With the closure of Joe Foss Shooting Range, does anyone really want another situation, another person accidentally shot and killed? So the West Valley is in dire need of having a safe shooting environment. At Joe Foss Shooting Complex, we have actually trained safety officers, which the majority, as Tony mentioned, are retired military, law enforcement, or outdoors people who love the sport of target shooting. All volunteers are trained in range safety and basic first aid. Trash. With the closure of Joe Foss Shooting Complex, in what state will the desert be left? When people go out and shoot in the desert, they take items to shoot at, so there's going to be, and there's no toilet facilities. On the positives, during my four years at Joe Foss Shooting Complex, I saw entire families come out to shoot because they loved the staff and felt safe. I met families up to three generations on Mother's Day and Father's Day. I saw mothers and daughters who just found out they got a tag for elk or deer hunt, and they need a place to practice. The kids would come into the store to show me their targets, to share with me how well they did. I had the blessing of seeing regulars come in.
Thank you. Jay Wagner, and then Carl Lovett.
I have a vest, too. Not much use to me now. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jay Wagner. I'm a resident of the West Valley, having owned my residence in unincorporated Maricopa County near Buckeye since 1994. Unfortunately, I am also forcibly retired as a range safety officer volunteer of the Joe Foss Shooting Complex in the Buckeye Hills Regional Park, west of the city of Buckeye. In some form, a publicly accessible outdoor shooting range has been on those lands since at least the 1940s, after used as a military desert training area during World War II. In the early night, in early 2000s, the public area was relocated to land now known as the Joe Foss Complex. The relocation was required to provide space for the building of the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office Range, also within the Buckeye Hills Regional Park. These two facilities have coexisted since at least 2009, with, to my knowledge, no serious injury to the thousands of people who have made good use of the area. I have personally given more than 2,000 hours of my time helping to keep the complex open and available to the public of the county, and during my time, more than 600 people every month have made use of this public facility, including the general public, law enforcement, West Valley City Police Departments, as well as a few FBI agents, Border Patrol trainees, Lewis Prison Corrections Officers, and others. According to the Arizona State Rifle and Pistol Association, who managed and operated the complex from 2017 to 2023, nearly 8,000 people have utilized the range on a yearly basis, including the Buckeye and PD Departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Lovett, and then Don Howard.
Hello. My comrades have given almost all the good points. I want to give a couple, though. I find it very pleasurable to teach young individuals who show up, they have their firearms, and have no idea how to operate it safely, or sometimes even how to operate it. And it gives you great satisfaction to help somebody in that task. And the desert's not an option anymore. The government agencies, the sheriff's departments, the game and fish department agents, they stop you out there and tell you, no shooting. No shooting out here. They post signs in areas where we used to shoot. Those areas are going away. And so we need this public range. The sheriff's department, on the other hand, they have a $20 million facility just up the road. We can hear them shooting from our facility. They have a $20 million facility up there, they don't need ours. Ours is like a ghetto compared to what they have. They don't need ours. And if they do need additional training facilities, I'm sure BLM would donate them a piece of land, they can build the additional training facilities that they require without taking away from the public. So I'm asking you to disapprove. This is going to come to your desk. I'm asking you to disapprove it.
Don Howard, and then Gene Morrisby.
Hello, my name is Don Howard, and I'm a volunteer at Joe Foss. The volunteers' weekly activities include shell casing recovery, target preparation, trash pickup, toilet cleaning, weed abatement, painting repairs, and general maintenance, all at no cost to the taxpayer. Joe Foss can accommodate both the public on weekends and the law enforcement on weekdays, while volunteers provide custodial care and maintenance and administration. I'd like to say that there's, my counterparts have already mentioned that people will be shooting out on the desert, and the BLM land is pretty much open, you can shoot anywhere, and there'd be residue of lead. Without a range, desert shooters can spread lead all across the desert. I think that law enforcement and the public can both benefit using the range, and the county will be better off for it. In closing, I remind Parks and Recreation that shooting is a recreation, and I'd like my job back. Thank you.
Okay, Sean Morrisby, and then Kyle Barrett.
Hi, my name is Sean Morrissey. First, I'd like to thank you for what you guys do, and I'd really like to say to the sheriffs, I have nothing but respect for you, what you do.
Hold on, your mics.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. My name is Sean Morrissey. First, I'd like to thank you for everything you do, and the sheriff's department for what they do for us. But I have to say something about this range, and me, my family, my community, we absolutely adore this little gem that is the Joe Foss Shooting Range, and we need it. We need this range for all the things that were mentioned. I don't have to reiterate that. And so please, I ask you from the bottom of my heart, to stop this transfer. Thank you very much.
Okay, Kyle Barrett, and then Robert Branch.
Good morning. I'd like to start off by saying that there's no changing table in the family bathroom. My name is Kyle Barrett, and I'm here to ask you to stop the transfer of Joe Foss Range to MCSO. Mr. Hickman, you're my supervisor, and I'm holding you personally responsible for getting Joe Foss Range into the hands of a public or a private nonprofit. Maricopa County Parks and Rec said in their January meeting minutes that they want Joe Foss open to the public, but in February, they told AZCDLF, the vendor to the range, to cease any improvements because the range would be closing in July. They cite safety concerns and taking lead out of the berms, but the range is still being used by MCSO. If you ask anyone who actually uses the range, there are no safety concerns that need to be addressed, and lead abatement can be done without closing the range or giving it to the MCSO. There is no reason why a request for a new vendor cannot be put out now while we wait for Parks and Rec's unnecessary inspection. I have here AR-032193, the deed that grants Joe Foss Range to the county from the Bureau of Land Management. It states that the land must be used for public recreational purposes, or be given back to the federal government. Parks and Rec is breaking the law by closing the range to everyone but MCSO. Sheriff Skinner, for his part, will not publicly say that he will open the range to the public. Parks and Rec is also giving you incomplete information about the number of users the range has. Their numbers only include Saturday and Sunday shooters. They are intentionally leaving out Buckeye Sportsman's Club, Hubble Creek Rod and Gun Club, trap and skeet shooters, including many kids and teens who participate in school clubs, competition shooters, instructors who teach firearm safety and higher education, and other user groups. These groups must now drive over an hour to use Ben Avery Range. If there are two things that I want you to take away from what I said here today, they are that, one, RJ Carden and his fellow bureaucrats and Parks and Rec cannot be trusted, and two, you, the Board of Supervisors, must by law reopen Joe Foss to the public. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Gallardo.
The last speaker on Joe Foss is Robert Branch.
Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, I am Dr. Bob Branch. I'm the Commissioner of Parks and Rec from Maricopa County's District Four, and I want to thank you very much for having us here today, and thanks for the great people standing up for Joe Foss. At Parks, our mission is simple: through responsible stewardship and provide quality parks, trails, program services, and experiences that energize visitors and creates lifelong users and advocates. I have fought for Joe Foss for years. The reason why we publish this is to instill trust into our citizens. When we say that we're going to close Parks, excuse me, Joe Foss, which is one of our parks, and we're going to close it, and give it to another government agency, that betrays that trust, and I don't want to betray that trust. I haven't been able to get answers, because I am here as a representative from the citizen board. None of us have voted on this. None of us have advised you on this. I never came back, and neither one of, I never came back to Supervisor Hickman, and none of your, none of your people come back to you and said, this is a good idea. In fact, we all got a text that said, hey, by the way, the park, Joe Foss, is closing. And I think that that was a big slap in the face, not only for the people, but for you. I have asked specifically, was it your decision, or was it RJ Carden, as somebody said,'s decision? I got a text back that asked me to please leave this one alone. I won't leave it alone. These people deserve to have that open. We need to have it open. We love MCSO. Come out and shoot with us. But it's ours. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up. Next up is Don Adams, and then Roger Pickrell.
Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm going to read an article from New York Post. CrowdStrike Global Tech Outrage Snarls Early Voting in Arizona. With GOP Convention Travelers Delayed, A Massive Global Tech Outage Friday Snarled Early Voter Voting in Arizona's State-Level Primary Election. As travelers leaving the Republican National Convention in Milwaukee were delayed, and officials said Friday. Some early voting station in the Grand Canyon State, where early voting has been open since July 3rd, were knocked out of use Friday, according to the Maricopa County Elections Department. And in your own words from a, from a post from Maricopa County, "Due to global tech outage, Maricopa County election is also experiencing an outage at some 15 voting locations. Please visit location.mericopa.vote for the most up-to-date information about locations that are open and their hours of operation." Now, for the last three plus-plus years, you've been telling us that the machines aren't hooked to the internet. So how does an internet outage affect your voting locations? Have you been lying to us for three years? No, uh-uh. But I got some good news, is 2020, it ain't over yet.
Mr. Chairman, because there's some people in our audience, after they've made their public comment, they might not know if it's up to you, if you talked about the Joe Foss issue, if you want to stick around for the rest of the public comment period, or if you'd like to leave and go back to the West Valley. It's a long drive, so it's up to you, it's up to you guys, they just don't know that, about the public comment period.
Okay. We could have staff, I think, clarify some factual issues.
Yeah.
I don't know. We were accused of lying, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. County manager, perhaps we should clarify the connection to the internet issue?
Chairman, Vice Chair, the Valley Tabulation Center is air-gapped and was not impacted by the tech outage.
No more outbursts, or we will clear the auditorium. Thank you. Okay, Roger Pickrell.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Those of you on the Board of Supervisors, please notice that I have delivered packets to each and every one of you this morning. And in those packets, you have a letter in response to a letter to Adrian Fontes that was sent to the Board of Supervisors of Navajo County. "The Navajo Board of Supervisors have been investigating election machines and contemplating doing hand counts. Mr. Fontes attempted to portray hand counts as unlawful. The letter in response to Mr. Fontes's letter lays out how incorrect and misguided Mr. Fontes is at this time. In addition, you will find a notice of cease and desist from further use of any election system that is dependent upon contracts with corporations. The Help America Vote Act, HAVA, of 2002, coming from the federal government and interfering with state election processes, is entirely unconstitutional on its face. In any state governmental, government official or officer decides to adhere to an unconstitutional federal act, the official or officer will be found to be in maladministration or worse. The cease and desist letter is the people's last attempt to awaken you to the error of compliance with the HAVA. My hope and desire is that those of you on this Maricopa County Board of Supervisors will come to your senses and reverse the previous course toward insurrection against the United States and Arizona constitutions. I pray you will determine to those who do what is right instead of those who persist in doing what is wrong. God bless you, and thank you for your time."
Okay, next up is Lisa Maxura, and then Jim O'Connor.
All right, I got it, I'm good. In support of boring elections, my name is Lisa Maxura. I have lived in Arizona for 30 years, mostly in the East Valley. I am from Pennsylvania. I am a disabled voter. I vote in all elections, federal, state, and local. Back when I was a lot less wobbly, I used to vote in person. Now, as a more wobbly person, I vote by mail. I'm grateful that Maricopa County has made voting easy for me, while keeping in place the nerdy voting procedures and technology that protect my vote and the votes of my neighbors. I love that I can get ballot status alerts on my phone. I appreciate all of the election workers, from the volunteers to the Secretary of State and the county recorder. It's got to be difficult to face the suspicion of some of your neighbors in contentious times. I'm grateful to each of you in your support of the democratic process, and I felt it was important to come here and to say so in person. In my immediate family, my mom, my brother, my two sisters, and me, there are a wide variety of political opinions. We include two conservatives, one libertarian, and two Democrats. We all vote by mail. America is a macrocosm of my family, loud, opinionated, and mostly loving. I'm not here just to support my freedom to vote, I am here to support the freedom to vote of my neighbors, who vote differently than I do. I am against any attempt to weaken elections. As you know, it is a hard, often thankless work to defend the democratic process. It is and will be a tiring day for me to get all the way down here from my home in Mesa and get all the way home again, and took off work today to be here, because free and fair elections matter to me. And thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Lisa. Jim O'Connor, and then Diane Barker.
I'm probably good, thanks. We don't need any more elevating or de-escalating with this podium. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I'm here today, not in my state-elected capacity as chairman of our Arizona Corporation Commission, but I'm here today as an individual, holding a much higher office as a legally registered Maricopa County voter. I have very brief remarks. You gentlemen have heard for the entirety of your time in office from the voices of your constituents, many in this room today, expressing our outrage over the maladministration of our county elections. Even earlier this month, voting centers were shut down, or at least the media has been reporting that early voting centers have been shut down. What may that portend for next Tuesday, the 30th of July, or November 5th? I, as one of your voters, am very, 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 very nervous about another maladministered or botched election. I respectfully call on each of you, once again, as I've done in writing a number of years ago, to do the right thing and honor your oaths of office and all the voters in our county. But I now refer you, because I believe many of you are Christian men, refer you to a higher authority, one scripture from James 4:17. So if you know of an opportunity to do the right thing today, yet you refrain from doing it, you are guilty of sin. God bless you.
Diane Barker, and then Steph, Steph P.
Hello again, Jack Sellers, Board of Supervisors. I'm in District 5, but I've been all over the valley, and I've actually lived in seven cities, and I have been a long time in support of free, authentic, fair, and honest elections. And just to let you know, in 2000, I couldn't find an attorney, even though I was prompted by the city of Phoenix on transit 2000, to represent me in court, so I had to sue all of you. And no one said I was wrong, it was on a technicality that I didn't do, you know, not being an attorney, but that I'm actually, again, wanting you to have all the processing honest and fair. People deserve it. Okay, so I'm here to follow up on an agenda item. If you remember, this is back in June, the 26th, your formal meeting, and I got to speak with Jan, and I'd like to have her maybe give me the answer to this. My alert is, I've been seeing third parties into government, which I perceive is a quid pro quo, and, you know, I don't like that, because, you know, we shouldn't have people buying our government. And so this was a third party, it was an alert, it was processed by access. Access has had unfortunate third-party corruption, but now I see that this, my question to you, and I went back, I got an answer from Kelly. She said that it was out of the Health Department, and what they're doing is, they're going to bill at a lesser rate. However, you said on the face of this agenda item that it was non-financial. Isn't a lesser rate, that's my question, financial, and shouldn't somebody correct this?
Steph P., and then Barbara Ratty.
Did you get the answer?
Barbara Ratty.
Steph P. gave me her spot because you guys didn't allow me to speak, and according to your rules, there's no reason that we can't.
Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 1, it says the fundamental principles, a frequent recurrence, Thomas Galvin, to fundamental principles is essential to the security of individual rights and the perpetuity of free government. I'm going to repeat that one more time. The Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 1, says fundamental principles, a frequent recurrence, Thomas Galvin, to fundamental principles is essential to the security of individual rights and the perpetuity of free government. You had said a moment ago that we're not allowed to repeat. According to the Constitution, you're violating that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. She cannot jump the line. There's people here. You can't, you can't just talk for someone else.
No, we can't. You didn't let me turn in my slip.
Let's, let's.
You're interrupting my time. 3.8 billion.
She's out.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Knows the rules, Jack.
I mentioned that so that when we talk about what's going on with our elections, you'll realize that you have the funding to be able to take care of that.
Thank you.
Barbara Ratty, and then Dan Schroder.
Barbara Ratty. The board members know our elections go against the Arizona and federal constitutions. Therefore, they are illegal, unlawful, and unconstitutional. Could that be considered as treasonous actions by going against the Constitution? They have done nothing to change our elections. These elections are running in a manner that still our votes. How? Corrupt the voter rolls by inserting phantom voters using similar identities but a little bit different and keep on the rolls ineligible voters that have moved or died. Print ballots by a third-party vendor. Keep track of who has returned mail-in ballots and who has not. Have ballots filled out illegally by machine or by hand for voters that are on the rolls but have not voted for many years, or ballots that were undeliverable. Distribute fraudulent ballots throughout the counties and state in drop boxes. Do not have a secure signature verification process. Do all of these to match up with machine algorithms total votes. If the election day in-person vote is large, stop counting the votes until enough fraudulent mail-in ballots can be inserted into the system to make the numbers match, using voting machines that are not tested and certified by accredited laboratory per ARS 16442B. The only way to have free, fair, secure elections is to go back to small precinct voting, one election day in person, paper ballots, voter ID, and no machines. Limit absentee ballots for the military, elderly, and special circumstances. Make election day a federal holiday. This Board of Supervisors has done nothing to clean up our elections. We need to vote in Dr. Bob Branch and bring in Don Hyatt as Maricopa County Recorder. Don is the only qualified candidate for that position. They will accomplish great things together. Thank you.
Dan Schroder, and then Lawrence Hudson.
All right, I'm Dan Schroder. I just want to thank you guys for being here and listening again. I think I'm just going to play this off the heart here. Everything that's been said about the elections, everybody knows. The whole world knows this whole election fiasco in America is fake. It's fake all over the world. The Dominion machines, all these electronic machines, it's a joke, and everybody knows it. What you guys may or may not know is that we have been under a secret military occupation. We have been under a continuity of operations plan. This is all, it's all out there, it's all documented, and they've been watching you guys. In 28 September of 2018, Trump put out an executive order, 13848, and it basically gave the armed forces the green light to study and watch everything that's going on with our entire election system. And since then, you guys have all, anybody that has participated in the election fraud in any way, has been tracked. So I'm actually happy that things are going the way they're going. I love seeing the corruption. I love the fact that nobody's really stepped up to the plate with our legislature, with the Board of Supervisors, with anybody in government. Nobody's stepped up to the plate and tried to fix anything. And the best part of it all is you guys are all trapped. You've all identified yourselves as traitors to the United States of America.
Lawrence Hudson, and then Roger. One more outburst, and we will just adjourn the meeting. Lawrence Hudson, and then Roger Lindquist. Lawrence Hudson.
He was here, but I don't see him now.
Roger Lindquist. And then Janie Barnes.
Mr. Chair and Board, currently the legislature, the Board of Supervisors, as well as Sheriff Skinner, have all been made aware of laws that have been violated and quite possibly will be violated again in the 2024 primary. Our sacred United States elections have been violated, and you are now being given an opportunity to make the appropriate changes. One is to allow and support hand counts at each voting center in the upcoming election. Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 1, fundamental principles. A frequent recurrence to fundamental principles is essential to the security of individual rights and the perpetuity of free government. We are making sure, as we the people, to do our duty by reminding you of the fundamental principles to secure our rights, which is why we are sharing these laws with you. We have two state laws on why tabulator machines cannot be used, and a hand count is the only reasonable and prudent lawful answer. ARS 16442B, machines or devices used at any election for federal, state, or county offices may only be certified for use in this state and may only be used in this state if they comply with the Help America Vote Act of 2002 and 2002, and if these machines or devices have been tested and approved by a laboratory that is accredited pursuant to the Help America Vote Act of 2002. ARS 16564A, removal and opening of box. Number three, before receiving any ballots, the election board in the presence of the persons assembled at the voting place, it also says, "The ballots shall not be removed from the polling place or the presence of bystanders until all ballots are counted." Therefore, hand count is the only lawful action for we the people.
Okay, Janie Barnes, and then John Kane.
Hi, my name is Janie Barnes. You said not to be repetitive, so I won't. I have spent over 44 years in a manufacturing environment, in productions, manufacturing operations. I've been a supervisor for over 10 years in manufacturing operations and have been in charge of a lot of equipment. My last operation, I was in charge of over 103 pieces of equipment, and every one of those pieces of equipment had a periodic maintenance schedule. I was anxious to see your M-Tech center and maybe be impressed by it, and this is what I found instead. When I asked Christine, the supervisor, how often the machines were, had their periodic maintenance schedules done, she didn't know what I was talking about. I said, "Well, I see no clipboards on the side of the machines, so are they kept online? Are the records kept online?" She also did not know what I was talking about. Her response was, "Well, when they get dusty, we dust them." No, "When we replace parts, is there a qualification done, Christine?" She didn't know what I was talking about. "Well, we have Dominion that sits here in a chair, and if something breaks, they fix it." So you have the fox guarding the hen house. You have people who don't like us sitting in a chair waiting for something to break before you fix it. Okay, I've never seen anything like that in a manufacturing environment. We never had a vendor sitting all day long in a chair waiting for something to break. Instead, they trained the operators how to qualify the equipment every so many hours or so many widgets, and that's what should be happening with this equipment. Okay, in addition to that, she gave me a tour of the warehouse, but everybody was at lunch. They shut the bay doors. They did not lock them. I could see that they were still open because of the light under the door, but nobody was in there. Not to worry. Anybody could sneak in there anytime. I would offer my services to help you clean up your operations and make them GMP compliant and ISO compliant, but it would be pointless because I found out they're against the law anyway, because according to our Arizona Constitution, the votes should be counted by the people, not machines, and the votes, not the ballots, are to be counted before they leave the precinct. So all of these ARS statutes.
John Kane, and then Tom Arnold.
Nice job, Jan. Mr. Chair and the Board, why hand count teams must be allowed to count the ballots before they leave the voting centers? ARS 16564, opening, exhibiting, and locking ballots box before receipt of ballots, removal and opening of box. Before receiving any ballots, the election board in the presence of the persons assembled at the polling place shall open, exhibit, and lock the ballot box, and thereafter, the ballots shall not be removed from the polling place or presence of the bystanders until all ballots are counted. Therefore, the responsible action by you, our public servants, is to go on record stating that hand count teams must be allowed to count the votes before they leave the voting centers. Hand count is the only lawful action for you to take. We are here to fulfill our duty by warning you about the laws and letting you know hand count is something we are preparing for. Thank you.
Tom Arnold, and then Lori Barone.
Hi, I know you can't answer a question, but I do have a hope, and I think it's a hope shared by everybody in this, that if you're assured that we have election integrity, could you convince us, please? Okay, we, the people of Arizona and these United States, come to you with this cease and desist notice to inform you of your violation of the United States and Arizona Constitution, as well as multiple Arizona state statutes. It is hereby demanded that you immediately cease and desist from the use of all contracted machines, systems, and other computer programs, algorithms, machines, et cetera, which are an interference to the people's electorate process. Contrary to the prevailing practice, the current electoral processes have been in a continuing inference of the people's elections, as seen in Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 21, Free and Equal Elections. All elections shall be free and equal, and no power, civil or military, shall at any time interfere to prevent the free exercise of the right of suffrage. The United States and the state of Arizona courts of record will find settled law in the case of Miranda versus Arizona. I won't read them. Where rights secured by the Constitution are involved, there can be no rulemaking or legislation which would abrogate them. There's two more paragraphs that I am to read, but again, I just wish, that again, if in your eyes, things are above board, please find a way to share with us so we can be convinced. Thank you.
Lori Barone, and then Dan Schroder.
Okay, a couple of things. I'd just like to share with the public that this is the 13th meeting since the first of this year alone, and on average, there are 100 items. That means 1,300 items have been passed since the first of January, approximately, with not a single item not approved. Some things were moved to a different meeting, but that's 1,300 just since the first of the year that are just blanket approved. So that's just my first point. Secondly, the Joe Foss takeover sure sounds to me like you're trying to infringe on the rights of the free citizens of this country and this county and this state to be able to practice to be responsible Second Amendment gun owners and users. That's dangerous, and that's, that's, that's not going to go well for you gentlemen. So my next point is, the state legislature codified by enacting Title 16, which further allowed states, 15 counties, to enter into unconstitutional contracts with corporations that own and operate the system, machines, and devices as required by HAVA. The same corporations, along with unconstitutional contractual agreements with Arizona's government, state, and counties, remove the people's electoral process by requiring corporations to, their own personnel, to manage the voting system's equipment prior to, during, and after election day. Due to the corporation's use of proprietary property and/or confidential information based on unconstitutional agreements, the people of Arizona are unable to observe Arizona's proper electoral chain of custody of the people's ballots. The state of Arizona's government and corporations contracted them, removed the people's ability to observe the counting of ballots, thereby subverting the chain of custody. This is an interference with the Arizona constitutional requirement to free and equal elections. Therefore, the people of Arizona are disenfranchised. This disenfranchisement must cause, must cease and desist immediately, and yeah, and allow the hand count.
Okay, next up.
Y'all are on notice.
Next up is Laura Weaver, and then Roxana.
Mr. Chair and Board, the Tenth Amendment lets us know the powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively or to the people. We know that the rights are reserved to the states, not the federal government. The Ninth Amendment to the United States Constitution also states, "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." The people require that all boards of supervisors immediately cease and desist from the use of all election-related machines and devices, and immediately choose to hand count ballots at the site where the ballot was cast. In this way, boards of supervisors will be properly fulfilling their responsibilities to uphold the constitutions. Further, should boards of supervisors and all others named herein choose to continue to violate the mandatory provisions of the Constitution, the boards of supervisors and all others named herein will be found to have intentionally ignored this final notice to cease and desist from a violation of rights, and thus will have made a treasonous decision that will have a negative consequence in the future. Lack of response to this cease and desist notice will stand as acquiescence to the truths found herein, that people have spoken and demand that their government officials and officers now correctly respond with appropriate action to cease and desist the use of all systems and equipment that require a contract with a corporation. This action will then allow for trained hand counters among the people to proceed to accurately, quickly, and safely count the cast ballots so that the results of elections may be known while maintaining the purity of the electoral process. Bipartisan hand count training is currently happening. We ask for your support and effort in helping to get more bipartisan people involved in hand count teams. Bottom line, you as a BOS has responsibility for the day of election process and its ultimate certification. We ask that you return to the rule of law and abide by the Constitution. We, the people, pray for a free and fair election process in next week's primary.
Thank you. Next up is Roxana Holzepfel. Next is Don Hyatt, and then Lawrence Hudson.
Chairman Sellers and Board of Supervisors, my name is Don Hyatt. My name is Don Hyatt. I'm a current candidate for the next Maricopa County Recorder's Office. I come here today to talk about contingency planning. I was greatly interested in watching the press release yesterday performed by Maricopa County Elections. They talked about all different kinds of contingencies that would have been taken care of. As an IT and data integrity expert for 38 years, I have a lot of experience in helping businesses work through business continuity efforts. helping businesses work through business continuity efforts, which is what was, was being pointed to in the press conference. I don't believe that the county is prepared for all contingencies on voting day. And I, and I believe that because of what, what happened last, last Friday with the, um, the problem with the, the crowd strike problems. The county's e-poll books are connected with MiFi devices, which are an internet device, and of course, they will be subject to the same problems that the internet is subject to. So the only, the only viable way that can be, can guarantee continuity of election day is a hand count process. We have to return to precinct voting with one day, one vote, paper ballots, with a hand count in, in the evening by, by your friendly precinct. Then we will have free and fair elections in this state again. Again, my name is Don Hyatt. I'm running for the Maricopa County Recorder's office, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, Michael Schaefer.
Mike, Michael Schaefer, it's interesting. The most important topic that should be here, we had a president, the actual elected president, was almost assassinated last week, and we push off stolen elections till the end of this meeting. We know, and know that you know, our elections have been stolen, an undeniable fact. You violated your responsibility for accurate elections. The elections are pre-programmed to enable people, perhaps like you, to be elected and eliminate the candidates that the people voted for. You know it, and we know it. Our founders of our great nation told us exactly what to do when any form of government becomes destructive. It's the right and the duty of the people to alter or abolish it and institute a new government. No applause. The people declare today that we want you all out of our elections. I owned an ISO test lab for 20 years. I know about certifications and accreditations, and I can tell you, these machines that you have are not. They violate the HAVA Act, Arizona 442B, the Constitution, and have not probably not been properly certified by an accredited test lab, which I own since 2018. We also want MIC Tech and RunBack out of our elections. The people, the people will count the ballots at the precinct sites. I also bring a cease and desist order from using the voting machines in the upcoming election. You've not listened to us for a long time. I will be passing out the cease and desist order or ask the help for one of our great sheriffs. And those who agree, please stand quietly. Thank you.
Christina, is, is that Christina? Vane or Vale? I can't make out the name. Christina? Patty Porter. And then Ray Michaels. Patty Porter. Ray Michaels. And then Anthony Miletto.
Ray Michaels. To have self-governance, you must have an educated populace. We are a republic and not a democracy. In the words of Thomas Jefferson, "A democracy is nothing more than mob rule, where 51% of the people may take away the rights of the other 49." Will Rogers stated, "Remember, democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself." There never was a democracy yet that did not commit suicide. Thomas Jefferson stated in 1785, "It has been thought that corruption is restrained by confining the suffrage to a few of the wealthiest of the people, but it would be more effectually restrained by an extension of that to such numbers as would bid defiance to the means of corruption." He continued on in 1806, "Should things go wrong at any time, the people will set them right by the peaceable exercise of their elective rights." John Jay pointed out that Americans were unique in the world in our ability to choose our own leaders. "The Americans are the first people whom heaven has favored with an opportunity of deliberation upon the choosing the forms of government under which they should live." Samuel Adams gave more perspective when he stated, "Each citizen, remember at the moment he is offering his vote, that he is executing one of the most solemn trusts in human society for which he is accountable to God and his country." "When people are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow the men who pervert the Constitution," Abraham Lincoln. "The right to suffrage belongs to the people, and is the foundational principle to the constitutional representative republic." We, the people, must feel confident in the administration of this process, and we call upon each one of you to make
The next speaker is Anthony Miletto, and he is our final speaker.
Do you have envelopes for the people?
Juanita has them.
Okay, okay. Thought we should ask that. Hi, I'm Tony Miletto from LD2, and I'm here to ask for your help. Dominion tabulators are vulnerable to malicious hackers, as proven by cybersecurity experts. Removal of these tabulators and replacing them with a precinct-level hand count is the solution. For weeks, I sent emails to elected offices detailing the vulnerability and asking for assistance. Only response was from the Recorder's Office, who told me to come to you guys, the BOS. So I am here. All representatives take an oath of office to support and defend our constitutions. Article 2, Section 21 states, "All elections shall be free and equal." Our elections are not free when tabulators can be controlled, and they are not equal when other states can report results on election day. All elected representatives are responsible for our elections, and as a citizen, it is our responsibility to hold you governing these elections accountable for our rights, especially for a free and equal election. I'd like to close by saying, "The definition of dominion is to control. The definition of free is not controlled." Thank you.
That was our final speaker. Any final words, County Manager?
Nothing today, Chairman.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.